... meeting to order, and I'd ask that you all please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, if we could have roll call, please.
Craig, social.
Here.
That there.
Here.
Harry Paul.
Here.
John Murray.
Here.
Why they third.
Here. Okay. Mr. Baker's just informed me that even though New Prime is not here to represent themselves for a public hearing, we still have to suspend.
Suspend regular meeting and open.
Open a public hearing and then go through the whole. Okay. Excuse me, before we do that, I need to.
We got two minutes, don't we?
Look for a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
So moved.
I'll second a motion in a second to approve the minutes, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Okay. So now, the first thing this evening is supposed to be a public hearing for New Prime or Prime Inc. in reference to their tax abatement, which was denied at our last council meeting. They have the right to come and state their case. Phyllis received an email from them that they would not be attending. So with that said, I guess we still need to suspend the council meeting.
I'll make a motion to suspend the council meeting and open up public hearing.
One at a time, right? We need it that way.
Yeah, I did separate motions.
Okay. Suspend the council meeting.
And I got a second. You got a motion and a second to suspend the council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Now a motion to open up for public hearing?
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second to open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. So, the public hearing is now open. If there's anyone here to speak on behalf or against New Prime about their tax abatement, let them speak now. If not, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Now I would look for a motion to reconvene the council meeting.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second to reconvene the council meeting. Okay, so with that said, Tim, with him not being here, we've denied the tax abatement. There's nothing more we need to do, right?
Yes, there is.
There is.
Of course there is.
You have to adopt.
Nothing's that easy.
You have to adopt a resolution, which I prepared, that basically acknowledges that public hearing was held and that you are now at a point where you're going to either ratify your initial determination or modify that in some way or rescind that denial and allow it. So this is, I'm assuming that the council intends to follow through with the denial, so it's prepared for that. If you wish to do it differently, then I can bring that back at the next meeting.
Is anyone here that is not in favor of the denial? If not, then what's the resolution number?
I just want to make a comment that this would be only on real estate because the personal.
Yeah, and I changed the, this, the denial is, is the fact that on the personal property, the five-year abatement has run anyway. But even if it had not, the resolution acknowledges that they failed to reasonably comply with their SB 1 that was originally filed for, the personal property abatement. It's a denial of their real estate property tax abatement and also of the personal property tax abatement that they requested for 2018.
Does the county keep track that when those run out? So they want to deny it anyway?
I think county probably would as well.
I called them and she said that they just would ignore it.
Yeah.
They know that they don't need to do anything.
So we need a motion number?
We need a, we need a resolution number and then a motion to introduce.
Four.
And a motion to introduce Resolution 2018-4 by short title only.
I'll make a motion to introduce Resolution 2018-4 by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to introduce Resolution 2018-4 by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Tim?
Resolution 2018-4, short title, a resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which determines whether or not New Prime Inc. has made reasonable efforts to comply with the statement of benefits from SB 1 real property and from SB 1 personal property, filed with the city regarding an abatement of real property taxes and personal property taxes assessed on improvements made to its real property and equipment located in Adams County, Indiana, and whether or not the New Prime Inc. should be entitled to an abatement of real estate taxes and personal property taxes in 2018.
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2018-4.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass Resolution 2018-4. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. 2018-4 resolution has been passed.
And Phyllis, this copy needs to be sent to New Prime, a copy to the auditor and a copy for you.
Okay. Am I good now?
Good.
All right, good. Next thing on the agenda is a matter of record. Made this matter of record to the Board of Works earlier. We need to do the same to the city council, and that is Jack Macklin, the head of the Decatur Housing Authority, has made a, recommended an appointment to his board, and the person that he's appointing is Danae, D-A-N-A-E.
What's your appointment?
It's my appointment. He's recommending that I appoint. Danae, D-A-N-A-E Yabara. And that's Y-B-A-R-R-A. Danae Yabara to the Decatur Housing Authority, and I just want to make that a matter of record. She's accepted that and will sign her papers with Phyllis, so I can make that a matter of record.
So moved.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Next, we have a couple of event forms that are here this evening. The first one is from VP Racing Fuels, and I think we have a few people here from VP Racing. If you'd please come forward, we videotape all of our meetings. There's a microphone here. I think you've already submitted the event form, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And Phyllis has a copy here. The event is going to be on April 7th. That is a Saturday. It would take place from, the setup would be at 8:00 AM. The event would start at 9:00 AM and end at 7:00 PM, and I think your intentions was to close the street just to the north, that one short block there, Muyver Street, from US 27 over to 12th Street.
Correct.
And what's going to take place in that street during the day? Just share a little bit with, first of all, introduce yourself to the council.
My name is David Shorts. I actually live in Hunter Town, but we recently purchased this facility and obviously remodeled it into the gas station for VP Racing. What we're intending or what we're attempting to accomplish by doing this is, we know that we're a racing-themed gas station. It's part of what we do as far as some of the fuel that we sell besides just standard gasoline. We're going to have some street cars, some classic cars and things like that on display in the lot next to, next to our property. And we know that it's kind of a habitual thing when people leave an event like that, they like to squeal their tires into a smoky burnout. Well, I do not want any of my attendees to do that on 27th, so even though it's against the law, we all know that that type of behavior happens, we'd like to block off Muyver Street and make it permissible for them to pull out onto Muyver Street, do a, do a short burnout as, as they're leaving the property, and then turn onto, onto 12, whichever direction they choose to leave, so that it's, if they're going to do that, it's conducted in a safe, controlled environment, rather than having somebody just freely pull out onto 27 and have an incident happen where we have an accident. I'd like to prevent that, if at all possible.
Okay, and part of, part of the event form required your certificate of insurance, and you have that here. And this would cover anything that would, could possibly happen on Muyver Street? Okay? And David has already got signatures from Les and Lenny and Jeremy, so are there questions from the council? I'll say that it's great to see a gas station back in that facility again.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We're, we're happy to be a part of Decatur. We've, we've been watching this site, sitting there being closed for a number of years, and just thought it was a shame that it was a great opportunity.
Just curious as to how many VP Racing locations are there?
Um, a total number, I'm not certain. I know that the two closest one to here, there's one in Sidney, Ohio, and then there's another one in Liberty, Indiana. So not another one within, less than 100 miles of, of Decatur. We chose that, my primary business, I build gas stations for a living. I've been doing this for quite some time. The reason I chose this particular station is, even though it was built and constructed in 1997, it is currently, it is currently compliant with all of today's EPA recommendations and standards, so it was an easy choice for us to, to choose it. We like the VP logo, we like the.
The racing thing, yeah.
The racing aspect of it. I grew up doing this. And it's, it's something different. It's something that's out of the ordinary. You can see shelves and VPs and, and whatnot anywhere you go. This is something different. It's, it's got an attraction to it. So far, the, the customer feedback response has been just phenomenal. And as well as the fact that, like the old, the Swiftie of old, we kept a full-service pump for, for our handicapped and elderly customers. We will actually still come out and pump your gas for you.
I liked it, just when it was cold.
A lot of people are like that.
Well, I just said back there, I said it cost another quarter, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, and most people don't even ask. We, we make sure, we tell, you know, it's a few pennies more, and they're like, yeah, I don't care, I'm not getting out.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we want to make sure that that was still a, an option for, for the, the people of Decatur.
That's a very good option. I mean, it's a good, I mean, like I said, you got a hole in that hole, you're the only one that does it, I think, so.
Uh, yes.
When, when Swiftie went out, I know a lot of the senior citizens and a lot of the older ladies in town, they're like, where am I going to get gas? You know? I gotta, I have to call my nephew to go gas in my car now, you know?
We've had, we've had some people that have brought younger people in with them, and they're like, no, we'll do it.
Yeah.
And we take care of that for them, so.
Any other questions for David?
How do you spell your last name?
It's S-H-O-R-T-Z.
I'll make a motion to approve the event request.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the event form for VP Racing Fuels on, what did I say again, April 7th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thanks for coming in, David.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your investment.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then I have another event form, and that is from Vinnie's, Vinnie's Bar, and it is something he's done in the past. This would be on August 18th, which I believe is the.
Saturday.
The sidewalk sale event that's going on that day.
Well, it's part of Kikianga Festival that week.
Okay.
The 15th to the 19th, and this is something he wanted to do.
Will downtown, will Second Street have sidewalk sales in July? Okay.
Right, but that Friday, we'll have the, the motorsports show.
Okay.
Then we'll have German Fest that evening. This is the following day, Saturday evening. He wanted to close down the Second Street between Monroe and.
Well, he's got on the event form that he would start the event at noon.
On Saturday.
Yeah, so is it, so he wants to close the streets at noon out here?
That's what it sounds like to me.
And there's nothing else going on downtown? I mean, there's no other?
Not at all, I'm sure. Or Main Street. Check the calendar with that in the future, but I don't see.
Being a businessman, would you want to see the, the downtown streets closed just for one thing?
With the event.
It's, he's just having an out, it's just a beer tent and outside. And a band. And it goes on until 10:00 PM. I mean, if they're really going to have bands and stuff from noon on, personally, I'd rather see it a little later. We'll deal with it either way.
It's in August. We got time to negotiate that.
Could we maybe table and ask Chris just a couple of questions as to what he. Yeah, he actually said that he would be setting up like at 8:00 AM, so it looks to me like the streets would be closed all day for just a beer tent for, I mean, there's nothing else going on, no other festival that day, it's just them having a beer, a beer tent.
Do you have anything for Main Street?
At this point, I can't respond.
Well, I'll tell you what, we have plenty of time.
Plenty of time.
To approve this one, so why don't you let me talk to Chris some more and see what is, you know.
And then if you don't mind, we'll get back with you during that festival if there's any other activities that are going on downtown.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, good.
It'd be nice if he'd use that new plaza we're building.
Yeah, really. When, when we can, yes. Okay, going on to the next thing. He wants to sell his beer. I need to make a matter of record. I.
Is there a motion to table?
I have a motion to table that.
I'll make that motion.
Event form. Thank you. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Spotlight on Decatur is this Saturday, and the City of Decatur has always been a major sponsor for that, and the sponsorship fee is $1,500, and I would like to make a request to the council members to okay our sponsorship of $1,500 again for this year.
I have to sustain for those votes.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to be a sponsor, a major sponsor for Spotlight on Decatur, $1,500. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same, and Barb note that, that Craig recused himself on that vote.
Thank you.
While we're talking about Spotlight, Craig, is this something that the council members need to?
Oh, I need to suggest your attendance, friends and council members. We have, we need to give.
Booths?
The top three booths. We do council wins awards.
What time do you want them there? The ones that can make it?
Yeah, I don't know, 10, 11. It starts at 8:00. There's a pretty big show going on. Then there's a rotary auction between 10 and 11. There's a WZBD auction. Can't remember what the time is exactly on that. We've got Donald Davidson, the Indianapolis 500 historian, starting at noon and going until 1:30. We've got a lot of booths and businesses that are going to be there. We've got Jim Barron's, it's going to be, the magician's going to be there from 3:00 to 4:00. I would say the booth judging, we'd really like to get that done someplace. If it's around noon guys, I'd be fine, but.
Let's do it before noon.
Whatever you think, whatever's comfortable, let's kind of come up with a.
Anyone here has the time on Saturday, you need to be out there at noon and hear Donald Davidson speak. It's a racing theme. Donald Davidson is the track historian at the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. Nobody knows more about the Indianapolis Motor Speedway than Donald Davidson, and he has all of it up here, you know, it's, he's amazing. He does, he has a photographic memory. Quick story.
Oh, yeah.
He spoke at our Chamber event here a couple of years ago, and back in like the 1940s, something like that, someone who was an Indianapolis Motors 500 winner, his name was Wilbur Shaw, was killed in a plane crash in Adams County, out near Peterson, and parts of that private plane are still in the area. Certain people have pieces of that plane. So this guy came and spoke at the Chamber event, and he told a lot of stories. He fielded questions from people, and everything that was asked, his answers were always really interesting. But the person, this one person says, I have a wheel here from a plane crash that occurred in, out near Peterson, from the plane crash that Wilbur Shaw was in. Can you tell us anything about it? And just like, just like the guy, just like it just happened, this guy goes, well, yeah, he goes, Wilbur Shaw, and he named up two other people that were with him, who the pilot of the plane was. They took off out of a Greenfield Airport and said what kind of plane it was. Said they flew to Detroit, Michigan, where Wilbur Shaw was to test drive a product for Chrysler Products, spent the day in, in Detroit, and then they were flying back to Indianapolis and while traveling over Adams County, had encountered bad, bad weather, plane crashed, and they all perished. I mean, he had the date and the names of the, this was all right there. So it's pretty amazing, but he, he'll talk, I mean, you can ask him any question, like where's, what is the most interesting part of the motor speedway, and his answer will be really cool. So noon, Donald Davidson. Anyhow, back to, would you guys want to, if you, I know, Matt, you got to work. If anyone can make it, let's say 10 o'clock?
Sure. Pick a time. We just want to go around.
This year, we're not going to get our caricatures done, right?
We don't have the talk this year either.
No, I don't have any on the schedule. I do have some really cool things that I'd really like to thank. Decatur Fire Department is going to be there, and they're going to do an educational piece for the young, the youth, and I believe that's between 9:00 and 10:00 AM. We've got some guys from the city police department that are going to be there and do an educational program. I think that was between noon and 3:00 or noon and 4:00. And then we've also got the Jim Franz from the county is going to do a canine demonstration with the, with the canine, Adams County Canine. He's going to hold that in the back gym. There's also the Pine Wood Derby for the Cub Scouts that's going to be in the back gym, and they've got the base painting and the characters and all that kind of stuff. A bounce house in the back gym, so it should be quite a fun deal. And like I said, then we close with this guy Jim Barron's, if you saw him last year at Kikianga, he's the magician guy. He's really holds some pretty neat tricks, so, illusionist, so should be a fun day. Cool. All right, moving on. The next thing, I have a request from Jeremy. Jeremy's not here to make the presentation. Jeremy, Don are both at road school this week over in Lafayette, so Jeremy is proposing, in case anyone hasn't noticed, First Street back here is kind of rough, and. I'm not on your stage, man. Rather than just patch it a little bit. He wants to really redo it. He wants to redo it. He wants to put in new sidewalks on both sides of the street, from Monroe Street down to Jefferson Street. He wants to put in new light poles like we put in out here, all the way down to Jefferson Street as well. And to do that, for the wiring of all the lights, that portion is, just the wiring alone is $12,000. The sidewalks from Monroe to Jefferson Street with eight foot on the east side and five foot sidewalks on the west side would be $48,400. And replacing the street lights with the decorative lights as, like out here on Monroe Street, $32,542.40. The street depart, the street department will mill and repave the street. That's the easy part. The total cost for all this is $92,942.40. That's an estimate, that's not exact. I asked Jeremy, I said, okay, was it budgeted? He said, no. He says, but, you know, we can go out there and we can just repave, First Street can be done, you know, but with Madison Street coming and as bad as the sidewalks are out there.
Some sidewalks aren't there anymore.
Yeah, yeah. He said, I'd like to do this. I said, well, okay, well, we need to talk to the person who has the money. So we went and talked to Phyllis, and we kind of went through some things, and the city council budgeted, as you recall, $750,000 total for capital projects this year. And we went through the list of things on there that we will be doing and may not be doing, and the one right now, we've already moved some of that money. We moved the renovation of the Masters Heating Building to the Madison Street. We did that several months ago. There's another $100,000 in here for First Street property acquisition, which was the house on the corner, which we've tried and have not been successful. And doesn't look like this year it will be successful, maybe in the future, but not this year. So we do have $100,000 that Phyllis has found. It's part of our $750,000 capital projects list, but it would be taken from the First Street property purchase and put into the sidewalks and street lights on First Street. And they've done all the water and sewer through there?
Yeah.
Finish it off.
This is a, this is an important.
It's a good project.
Project, and a real need, and as you said, there's no, nothing on the horizon at all there on the corner of First.
But this is, what this will do is, it'll, it'll tie Madison Street over to First Street, and eventually it will lend itself to the redevelopment of First Street.
And I will. Yeah. I will interject one thing here.
Chris started Monroe and worked at Jefferson, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, one thing that's under construction over here right now is the parking lot that Biggs will be putting in with the Loft Housing. And I don't know, and Melissa, do you know, were sidewalks part of that plan from Biggs? I mean, he, there may be a small part, portion of it that we might be able to get with the parking lot, I'm not sure. Walt, yeah, Walt was talking about it. But if so, that would lessen this a little bit, so. But if so, I, I can easily draw an arrow here and move this money.
So we need a motion to slate that money for this?
Just to designate.
Designate what that money should go to.
Okay. I would say, and I would, and since Jeremy's thing is strictly an estimate, I would say up to $100,000, is the way I'd say it.
I'll make a motion to designate out of the capital project fund up to $100,000 for the First Street project that was outlined tonight.
For lights and paving and sidewalks. Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Jeremy will be happy, and I'm sure he will thank you.
Yeah, and Main Street will be very happy also. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, yeah. The next thing I have is from, from Crow Horwath, Craig Lutz. The preliminary official statement for the Water Works bonding. He's emailed a 71-page, Tim has it here. Let's go with short title on that, if you would.
Yeah, it's not going to be any reading here. Trust me.
71-page document? I have one page, yeah.
Basically, this is a, this is a document that is developed and ultimately delivered out to potential bidders, and it, it provides a snapshot of the financial condition of the city and its Water Works Department, and lays out the bonding of the Water Works bonds that are going to be issued in 2018. It is something that has to be done in order to comply with SEC regulations, so this is the preliminary draft. It's given to the city for us to review to ensure that the information that's contained in it is accurate. So I've asked Phyllis, I've asked Kevin to review this. I've reviewed it. Bond council has reviewed it. There've been some changes made, just some minor changes and some major changes, and so this is still subject to some further revisions as we get closer to actually offering the bonds for sale. So, but the preliminary official statement is what we're talking about here, and Kevin and Phyllis and I have looked at this, and I think if the Board of Works is so, or I'm sorry, if council is so inclined, will authorize the mayor to sign this and will send this back to Crow Horwath so that they can continue to refine it in anticipation of the sale of the bonds. So it's just the process that you go through.
You need a motion.
Yeah, I would, I would just make a motion, authorize the mayor to sign the preliminary official statement on behalf of the city.
So moved. Second. I have a motion and a second for authorization for me to sign the, what would we call it again, preliminary official statement for the Water Works bond. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. This is the two pages that Craig sent me. Can I give those to you? You sign that one there. That's with Crow Horwath.
Crow Horwath.
Bonding contract.
There's our, your financial advisor.
Okay, that's that. Okay, that's that. Next, I need to make a letter that I received, a matter of record. It's from Mike Fawcett, who is one of our crew leaders with the Water Department. Mike has accepted another job elsewhere. He says, "I'd like to turn in my two-week notice effective today," and this was on February 26th. "My last day working will be March 9th. While I appreciate the opportunity I've had with the City of Decatur, I have received and accepted another job. Pay-wise, there was no way I could not decline their offer." It's a former employer that he used to work for and they've been trying to wow him back and they finally succeeded. So there's no hard feelings, Mike's done a really good job for us and we'll miss him, so. From there, Jeremy has posted job opening internally and generally what happens there is there's usually someone to offend that'll want that job and someone that takes that job will, domino effect, and more times than not, the guy we hire will end up on the trash So I just think make this a matter of record.
Matter of record?
Yep.
I'm going to make this a matter of record.
Yep, second. Motion and a second to make Mike Fawcett's resignation a matter of record, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All in favor, opposed the same, they keep the... Next thing I have is another matter of record and that is a notice to proceed letter that we received recently from NDOT in reference for the Five Points Project. And this is basically a letter to move forward with the preliminary engineering services for the Five Points Project and...
Notifying American Structure Point?
Yeah, it's notifying American Structure Point that that's to proceed with the preliminary engineering services, yeah. American Structure Point was the engineering firm that we went with on this and there's a letter with a few other documents attached to it from NDOT, which is something Jeremy's been waiting on. It's here now and so I just wanna make this a matter of record that the next phase for the Five Points Project, for American Structure Point to go ahead and start engineering services, make this a matter of record.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second to make this letter a matter of record, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you. Next thing, I have a contract from, actually, it's not a contract, it's an invoice, from Jones Petrie. You have a contract for that too, don't you, Phyllis?
Yeah.
From Jones Petrie for the design work on the nature preserve signage. This is just a sample of it, but these are small. The actual signs will be like three by five or something like that and they'll be positioned at various places and throughout the nature preserve. And on each, the first page, the first place you go to, which would be the trailhead, it just kinda tells about the four ecosystems out there in the nature preserve. And then each page thereafter, as you go walking through the nature preserve, the first one you come to will talk about the pond ecosystem. On the left side of the page, it gives information about endangered species, Indiana endangered species. So these are listing things and has a couple of photos of things that you will not see out there, or if you do, it's endangered. And then it'll talk a little bit about the pond ecosystem and then the type of birds and whatever that you will, that you may see out there. So the four ecosystems are the pond ecosystem, the forest ecosystem, the prairie ecosystem, and the river ecosystem. And each one, like I said, is broken down into endangered species and then information about what you may see there. Emerson Brown, a local high school student, took on this project of raising funds to pay for the signs and he's basically, he's raised half the money to pay for the signs, which is pretty awesome. Winston will also install the signs once they're made by placing them on, you know, four-by-fours and burying the four-by-fours in the ground, they will be mounted, they're not gonna be mounted vertically, they'll be mounted kinda like a podium there on an angle so that as you walk up to it, it'll be a little more interactive. The actual verbiage, the pictures, the design work of these, the actual signs, we agreed with JPR, Jones Petrie, Rafinsky for a sum of $3,000 to design the signs. They're not making the signs, they just designed the signs. And Nathan D., one of their employees up there, did all the research and mapping and everything that's on these. So I just need to approve paying Jones, JPR, $3,000 for their services in designing the signs for the nature preserve.
Make that motion.
Any questions before we do this? If not, Matt makes the motion?
Second.
And I have a second from Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed the same? Okay, Phyllis, you can pay that. Actually, before we go in, here's a copy of it. The trial head sign is 30 inches by 42 inches and then all the other signs are 24 by 36 inches. So not as big as I was thinking. When you see the actual size, they look pretty big. Okay, so that's done. Next thing I wanna discuss would be Hannah Nutman Park and our upcoming promotion for marketing the redevelopment of the park. And Melissa, if you wanna come up. At the last meeting two weeks ago, we okayed Loft House Films to be our marketing agent for this and Melissa has a press release and then she's also going to, I mean, this will go out to the press, it's also gonna go on social media and Melissa, take it away.
We all know that we're getting ready to take on the reconstruction of the Hannah Nutman Park for baseball and softball diamonds and this is gonna be a great opportunity to not only share this project with the community and have a great project when we're done. We wanna celebrate what Hannah Nutman means to this community. I'm not from this community, but from what I've learned, whether you have a child or a grandchild or a neighbor or a friend, everyone is connected to the Hannah Nutman facility. So one of the things we are working on to try to tell the story of Hannah Nutman and celebrate it is we wanna hear everyone's Hannah Nutman stories. You know, do you have a good story of when you struck out or you saw your child playing baseball or softball or you played yourself? We wanna hear your memories, we wanna see your photos, your videos, your newspaper clippings, anything that makes you have that warmth or the feeling about Hannah Nutman that you'd be willing to share with the community. We wanna hear those and see those stories. So there's a couple ways you can get those to us. You can drop off things to us at City Hall. It can be photos, videos, you can come in and tell me your story and we can write it down together, newspaper articles, anything that you drop off, please make sure that your name, phone number, and address is on it so that we can get those things back to you. You can email us, scan your photos or articles and send them to us if you know people who don't live in the Decatur community but would like to share their stories, please email them to us. The other way you can do this is if you post it on the Facebook, tag the City of Decatur and it'll make sure we see that and we'll collect that also. So we already had someone yesterday bring in a stack of scrapbooks about this tall and had, would you say, a billion stories to tell the mayor.
Yeah, it was awesome. He had, it was from 1967, 68, 69. 67 and 68 were the years that Hannah Nutman, Rube Winfield was being, all the brain work was being done. 69, they actually kicked it off and so it's really, really cool, all the articles that were in there.
Yeah, this is a celebration of everybody calling their story about Hannah Nutman and we're gonna use those stories as we go through the fundraising, remind people what the updates and donations are and on social media and just, again, it's, we're raving money, but this is also a celebration of this great facility that this community has.
So, you know, with the press release and the social media blast, we're gonna start asking people to send in their stories. 50 years of stories of playing baseball and softball at Hannah Nutman, of course, softball hasn't been there quite that long, but I know I have a lot of stories and Bob, I think you probably have a couple that you might even know, but...
Yeah, yeah, some you can tell.
So, so cool.
Did you do this or the marketing firm we hired do this?
Which are?
What you have there?
I created this press release based on the information we were looking for and right now, we're gonna have people deliver those, their memories and photos to us, then we will forward those on to the books of Loft House Films.
How are they doing the work?
I'm sorry?
How are they doing the work?
They are. I mean, we're just forwarding it all to them.
We're the collection point, we're in town and...
Yeah, well, I just thought like even the press release, how are they doing all that?
If we would've asked them, they probably would've. We had a little miscommunication with them yesterday, we thought we had a meeting and when they didn't show, we realized that something was wrong, so we wanted to make this announcement tonight, so we went ahead and had Melissa write it, so.
But they are in charge of all that.
Yep, and they're excited?
They're gonna funnel everything their way.
That's still wasn't my question, what you're funneling, but how, this was their, we gave them $30,000 to do this?
Yes.
That was my question. So you shouldn't be doing this, that's my question. Is that correct or no? I just wanted to know.
I think my understanding all along was that there needed to be a local point of collection for all of these stories and that that would be at City Hall, either with myself or the mayor or the members of Greater Decatur.
I get the drop-off point, I was just talking about the sending out the press releases and gathering that data to do all that, how that was their work.
They will be doing that, yes. And Melissa and I were talking today about some of the things and she was saying, "Well, I can do this." I said, "No, that's what we hired them for, so..."
Cause they said they could do it.
Right. And they will be. They will be. Yeah, like I said, tonight's press release was simply because we didn't have a chance to work with them today to have them write it and we wanted to get it out tonight, so. But good comment, we'll understand. And then the next thing, any other comments about the marketing for Hannah Nutman?
And I think you do a great job. Nothing against you, it was just the press.
And I think it's important that things like this come from the city, as Loft House Films, especially from their letterhead, with their quotes or their information. I would like that message to come from us, so that people trust in it, not that they shouldn't trust Loft House Films, but they know us.
But then we should've just paid you.
You already paid you.
Cause then we shouldn't have paid both of you, that's the point.
No, 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 she doesn't have time to do what they're gonna do for us, trust me. Any other comments on Hannah Nutman?
I ran into a guy at the post office named Jeff Sheets today and he said he was gonna drop off three huge books.
I got them.
He's got 50 years of memories.
It does.
He pretty tickled, I mean, he was standing around 50 years, it's pretty cool.
Yeah. I'll tell you what, his mother was quite the scrapbooker, cause I mean, she has, I looked up my batting average today from 1967. Wasn't bad.
Anyway. There you are.
She had that for every team in Little League.
She was, she's pretty cool.
Yeah, so anybody who sees his books, come stop by my office, they're pretty awesome. Okay, and then while I have Melissa up here, when it comes to fundraising for Hannah Nutman, we have a long, long way to go after we kick this thing off, but we've decided to have a fundraiser, the city, and we will be having a concert at the high school with a band called The Mercy Beatles and they're from Liverpool, England and they're very good. I've heard them a couple times and you'd think you're watching the Beatles, I mean, they're that good and they put on about a little over two-hour show with costume changes. They start out in the 1964 era and take you through the Sergeant Peppers and the Hippy Beatles and it's a really entertaining show. This will be a fundraiser, it'll be held at the Erickson Theater at Belmont on May 6th, which is a Sunday evening at 7:00 p.m. And we'll have an announcement about that entire venue. It serves two purposes in my mind. One, it's a fundraiser, if we simply sell a couple hundred tickets, we break even. We just had over 400 people attend Decatur, most talented, I think that we can sell 500 or more tickets for this. The theater seats nearly 800, it would be great to, it would be great to fill that thing with Beatles fans and if we did that, we can have a nice little kickoff to the Hannah Nutman project, so. Any questions on that? Okay, if not, believe it or not, we're down to Good Old Ordinance Number 2017-15, which is an ordinance that we've been visiting each council meeting for the last couple of months and again, would ask that we table that.
I'll make a motion to table that ordinance.
We're gonna table ordinance 2017-15 for another two weeks and then we'll table it again until likely May, when we get our new software in place for the city and at that time, we'll strike this ordinance and introduce a new ordinance. Wiley's made a motion to table it once again.
I'll second.
And I have a second on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Okay, with that, department heads, Jim, you got anything? Mike, please?
Nothing, I thank you.
Les?
No.
Kevin?
Software's kind of April, the utility software.
That's great. Kurt?
Great.
Ann? Melissa, anything else? Council members, any comments or things to report? Tim?
No.
You sure?
He's tired.
I can talk. No, no, that's all right. Phyllis?
I just need something made a matter of record. I have to yearly publish the Decatur's cash investment statement that shows our beginning balance, our disbursements and revenues. I just need that, a matter of record.
I have a motion to make this a matter of record?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to make the legal ad a matter of record, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Anything else, Phyllis? Okay, if not, I would go to the public this evening. Anybody from the public here have anything they'd like to address? I think maybe we do. If all three of you would like to come forward, we'd like to have you sit up here at this table because there's a microphone and we actually videotape all of our meetings and that way it'll pick up your voices on our tape. And if you would start out by introducing yourself?
I'm Allison McBride.
I'm August Burke.
And I'm Ben Cartwright.
I love that name, Ben Cartwright. Okay, the students are here this evening to kinda brief us on a rally that they want to have and they picked up the event form to do this and I think, you know, within the next two weeks, they'll get the event form filled out and back to us. You don't have to wait two weeks, you can get that event form back to us anytime and we can, that way we can approve, we can review it, okay? Just like VP Racing, they had it here already, they didn't bring it with them tonight, we had it and we're able to review it. So if you can get it back before, then that'd be great. If you wanna explain to us what your rally's all about and just tell us everything you can.
All right, okay, so actually, we're calling it the Never Again Rally. So we have students coming together from multiple different high schools, we're working closely with Heritage right now and they're trying to get other schools in the mix. We're coming here to organize, we wanna organize a march from the high school over to the courthouse and then have a rally there, cause we want to address the national epidemic of gun violence and our primary goal is to raise awareness, educate, and then just call people to action to solve the problem. And we wanna do a lot of informational and then some persuasive, we'll offer a possible solution. Like, it's definitely emphasized that it's going to be peaceful and you wanna do everything in the most respectful manner we can. Our tentative plan right now, we want to have it on April 20th because that is the 19th anniversary of the Call Mine Shooting and there's action and like rallies and marches and walkouts being planned all across the country on that day. So we really wanted, like, Decatur to be a part of that too, and not just students, but like the whole community involved and students from other schools and their families or whoever else to be here to support it. Yeah, we're just like, I'm feeling, like, students, like, we're leading it, but it's for everybody, this is an issue that touches everyone. But our plan is to, from like three or four grades, like, do this setup thing that, like, we had a meeting with the county commissioners this morning and we talked to them and they seemed like willing to do it, but they couldn't approve anything quite yet, so we're still collecting a lot of information still. Then probably after we get like our event form and alters, then we can go back to them and then get approval for the county property. Then our plan is to march, been from Belmont, at like 4:45, like, in a courthouse, sometime around... sometime around like 5:15 then, and seeing if we could have police like stop traffic and block off streets, so they can get there safely, and like block off some like streets on the courthouse square, so that we have room for the rally. Then it wouldn't be anything longer than like two hours then from there.
So at the rally itself, once you get down to the courthouse square, do you, are you bringing in some speakers, or who would be doing the speaking?
That's what, yeah, that's what, right now, what we're trying to do, we're trying to find, like, speakers or someone to like rent them from that we can use.
We do have a lot of students who want to personally speak about some of the issues that we would like to address, so I feel like we're going to have more students than like actual other people come in and speak. I know, like, I was going to speak, I was going to speak, and we have other students from like the different schools who were definitely willing to come and speak about some of the issues we want to address.
Okay. That was one question I had, it was like, who, who was going to be the speakers? I knew you, you mentioned no more than two hours. That's a lot of speaking.
Yeah. So that's what, right now, we have, kind of, we have it split into two sessions right now. We want to start off with a kind of memorial to the victims, then we want to have like a brief introduction, then we want to move on to like an informative section, and there's a group of us that we're basically going to plan and research the programming, and we're going to have students read them off, if we want to like talk about like, just like statistics, and then we want to do something, especially emphasizing, we at the high school that's been emphasized, we're going to bring, bring up again, is the whole see something, say something. Now, we said, hi, our principal has like been really like pounding that in, and we think that's really important, too. Then we want to bring up then, so like just emphasize like mental health and kindness. We also want to bring up gun safety, and we also want to talk about the current gun laws, and then also wanted to wrap up with like the voting, and then how to like contact your legislators and local government. And then we wanted to move on to persuasive speakers, then have anything, we want to have like, oh, like personal, like persuasive speech speak then, and then we would just wrap up and clean everything up after that.
So you, and you have Belmont's administration approval to form there at Belmont and start your march from there?
Well, I think you're doing everything right. You've approached the county, you're approaching the city, you got our event form, and you'll need to get the police and the fire and the street department to all sign off. You'll need to let the street department know if you need any barricades, I mean, just what things you need from them. You need to let them know as you, as you talk to them. One thing I, a question I had also was if, let's say you have 100 students or more, or whatever, that march, and they meet at Belmont, and they march down to the courthouse, okay? I think you and I had talked a little bit before the meeting, maybe using Jackson Street, North Adams Drive, Jackson Street, all the way down to Second and Endam. So the rally's over, and everybody's car's out to high school. Have you thought of that?
Yeah, that's what we like talk about, like, best way to like logistics, do we go about that? I don't know. Have people like, did everybody like walk back, or, I don't know, we've been trying to...
Because, you know, we, I think that the city and the, and the county would be glad to kind of get you the protection to get you all there safely, but when it's done and everybody disperses, depending on what the day's like, it's a Friday, we want to make sure that everybody gets back there safe also to their car. So I don't know, you might even talk to the school, the school, and see if they could provide a bus to take people back or something.
One other thing to you guys, in an event like that, if you're going to have a gathering of people, you ought to make, make accommodations for a restaurant facility. I don't know if you've done that or not, but just put that in your notes, get that many people around.
You can clear that with the commissioner, though. They will run up the courthouse for other groups.
Just saying. Be a good idea.
So, you're doing everything right, like I said? Check with the three department heads here as you put this together, and we will then vote on this at the next council meeting. Any other council members have questions for the students? If not, we'll see, well, you don't necessarily have to come to the next meeting, that's up to you, but we will review it at the next meeting once you get this submitted. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
And that is everything on our agenda. If there's no one else from the public that needs to speak? Mary, you want to say anything?
Oh, I wanted to make a correction. You, you credit the Winston Brown?
Emerson. Emerson Brown.
For the nature preserve, I did go.
His Eagle Scout project.
Yeah, he's an Emerson person.
Yeah, he said Winston later.
And I turned on said Winston, that's his brother. And on both.
Motion to pay the claims.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to pay the claims. Tyler's going to recuse himself, obviously, he must have a claim in there this month. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Right.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? We are adjourned.